There we go. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The Council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the City Council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Following the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Phase Two requirements, the City Council may conduct in-person meetings while continuing to provide remote access to their meetings until the Washington State restrictions are lifted. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. I'll say that over again, at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the City Council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. And once again, we're very happy to be here with the majority of the council members, and we're all maintaining our distance and adhering to the rules with our sanitizers and our masks and making sure that the area is sanitized before we come in. So with that, I thank everybody for being here. So next, we're gonna have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
President.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Oh, she should be virtually here.
Present.
Yeah, perfect.
And Mayor Martinez.
I'm present. Thank you very much. And thank you for joining us tonight, Blanche. So with that, can we all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Next, we have a consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or by the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to be to the regular agenda and considered separately. First on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council Remote Meeting held on February 16th, 2021, as well as the special meeting and workshop held on February 22nd, 2021. Bills and communications to approve the claims in a total amount of $2,499.29. Item C, Resolution, the Interlocal Agreement with the Pasco School District for School Resource Officer Services. That's to approve Resolution 4037, authorizing the city manager to sign and execute the interlocal agreement for the school resource officer services with the Pasco School District for the 2021 through 2023 school year and automatically renew for additional two-year term thereafter. Item D, the Code Enforcement Board Appointments, to confirm the mayor's reappointments of Thomas Graham Boyce and Daniel Gasciak to Position Number One and Two respectively on the Code Enforcement Board for four-year terms from January 1, 2021 to January 1, 2025. Next, we have the Joint Housing Authority Appointment to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Linda Dutlow to the Joint Housing Authority Board to Position Number Five for a five-year term effective January 28, 2021 through January 28, 2026. Next, we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Appointments to confirm the mayor's reappointments of Julie Campos and Brayden Lady to the Positions Number Three and Five respectively on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for three-year terms from February 2nd, 2021 to February 2nd, 2024. And next, the Planning Commission Appointments to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jerry Cochrane to Position Number Nine and the appointment of Kim Lerman to Position Number Four on the Planning Commission with Positions Number Nine for a six-year term from February 2nd, 2021 to February 2nd, 2027. And Position Number Four completing the unexpired term from March 1, 2021 to February 2nd, 2024. Downtown Pasco Development Authority Appointments to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Gabrielle Portugal to Position Number Four and the appointments of Kylie Grimes, Alexa Estrada, and Christina Viera to Positions Number Two, Three, and Five respectively on the Downtown Pasco Development Authority Board with the terms for Position Number Four effective December 20th, 2020 to December 20th, 2024. Positions Number Two and Three effective March 1, 2021 to December 20th, 2024. And Position Number Five effective March 1st, 2021 to December 20th, 2022. So with that, that is the consent agenda. So if there's no comments or questions by anyone in the council or the public, then I would like to entertain a motion by our Mayor Protem Barajas.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes.
Councilmember Maloney.
Yes.
Councilmember Milney.
Yes.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Thank you. Passed unanimously. And I also want to note and say thank you to Councilmember Alvarado and Councilmember Milney who was on the subcommittee with me. As you guys can see, it was a lot of interviews and going through applications, and we really appreciate and really enjoy going through all these applications of people who have passion to help our city. I want to thank those who are reappointed to continue in their commitments and also for all those people who are passionate about being a part of their community and helping out in the City of Pasco. Thank you very much. Everybody did great. I don't know if there's any comments you'd like to make, Councilmember Alvarado?
Yeah, I would just say I was very impressed by all the applicants. We had more applicants than we had spots to fill, which is always a good problem, but we had exceptionally really well-rounded applicants that we felt, oh man, like that would have been really good to appoint them as well. But I just want to thank everyone that is wanting to be civically minded and wanting to serve their city, so I'm very thankful for that. And for those who were not selected, I encourage you to continue applying. I'm sure there'll be opportunities in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on that, and I was really impressed of all the people that did volunteer. It takes quite a commitment to want to help your city. And I know when you're not getting paid for these positions, it's quite the challenge, but I really do appreciate people wanting to help our community and make Pasco a stronger and better place to live, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next, on the agenda, we got proclamations and acknowledgements. And tonight, we have a proclamation for the Boy Scout Troop Number 159 Week. And I would like to read this proclamation, and I just want to... Before I read the proclamation, was there anybody on the line tonight or anybody that would like to make a comment on this proclamation for Boy Scouts Troop Number 159? I just want to make sure if you're on the line, I give you an opportunity to say something.
No one is on the line, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we have a Boy Scout Troop Number 159 Week. Whereas on January 1, 1951, the Knights of Columbus Local Council Number 1520 of St. Patrick Catholic Parish, Pasco, chartered Boy Scout Troop Number 159 in Franklin County, Washington. And whereas the past 70 years, Boy Scouts Troop Number 159 has continued to attract a diverse group of outstanding leaders and scouts from Franklin, Benton, and Walla Walla Counties. And whereas Boy Scouts Troop Number 159 has provided 70 years of extensive service to our community through its scouting for food, Christmas gifting, and other and Order of the Arrow programs, as well as participation in various community programs, individual service projects, and wide variety of Eagle Scout projects. And whereas throughout the years, Boy Scout Troop Number 159 has prepared young men to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout Oath and Scout Law, providing extensive skill-building opportunities, individual challenges, and scout camaraderie. And through these efforts, have produced a multitude of community leaders. And whereas its 70-year existence places Boy Scout Troop Number 159 among the most enduring troops in the state, nation, and world. Now therefore, I, Sol Martinez, Mayor of the City of Pasco, Washington, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim March 1st through March 7th as the Boy Scout Troop Number 159 Week. So congratulations to Troop Number 159. How many of us on the council have been in Boy Scouts? You have Councilmember Serrano and Councilmember Milney. Anybody want to share something real quick?
Yeah, you know, I mean, those were some formative years for me. I had some awesome scout leaders that helped me get to Eagle Scout, and we had a lot of fun doing our camping activities and other, as you talk about here, skill-building. Some of my best friends I grew up with in scouting, still to today, we talk about the trips. Most of them are okay to talk about, you know? But no, in all seriousness, we had a lot of fun together. We learned a lot, and I'm grateful to have been a part of the Boy Scouts.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. And if I'm not mistaken, our city manager, Dave Zabel, were you a scout?
Yeah, I was a scout, but I was not an Eagle Scout, although my two sons are.
There you go. All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate you. And I hope you guys continue to do the great work you've been doing, so thank you for that.
Mayor, if I could interrupt, we do have an issue of noncompliance with the governor's order on masking. And we put a procedure out for council earlier this evening. I shared that with you, Mayor, a little earlier than that, but it kind of walks through some steps that council may want to take in the event of a noncompliance. As council is aware, the public portion of the meeting is optional. And so we're mandatorily have a virtual meeting. And if we can't maintain compliance, then we'll need to recess into a virtual meeting.
All right, thank you.
I have talked to one of the audience members, and he's aware of the requirement to mask and is indicated by not putting it on, he's not going to be putting it on. So I don't know that we can come into compliance.
Okay. Well, with that, I would ask at this time, for those of you who don't have a mask on, could you please help us in being compliant with our meeting so we can move on? Okay, can you put on your mask until it's time to do that, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a mask.
Well, then, we're gonna have to take a recess, and we'll have to reconvene at a later time. If these gentlemen don't want to adhere to the requirements, then we have to either one of two things. Either we can go to our homes and reconvene our meeting from virtually or we can wait until the gentleman comply. So with that, I'm gonna ask for at least a 15-minute or 10- to 15-minute recess, and I'll go and try to have a discussion and see if we can come back and reconvene. Okay, so for now, it's 7:14. We will go on to recess for 10 to 15 minutes, and then I'll come back and we'll decide if we can continue the meeting or not. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we, it is seven thirty, we're now gonna reconvene in the meeting. I just wanna make a comment. Uh, there was um, a couple of gentlemen here that just wanted to express um, their uh, their opinions. And they were very respectful and um, and agreed to to have a choice on making sure that we're adhering to the rules here during our regular meetings. So, we're gonna go ahead and proceed, but before we go into the next agenda item, I'm gonna allow for Councilwoman Roach, she wants to, she wants to give a comment.
Yes, just wanted to say um, that Troop one fifty-nine uh, is a, is a troop my brother was a part of. Um, my husband got his Eagle Scout uh, through Troop one fifty-nine and brother-in-law's. But currently, my nephew Clark Roach is uh, in Troop one fifty-nine. And he lives for it, yesterday, he was selling fertilizer um, in the neighborhood. And he's been known to upsell people on fertilizer, so watch out for him, he's a shark. Uh, but what I really appreciate about the Scouts is that they treat, they teach young men um, the value of community service. And I think that's a really great, great foundation for building character. And so I know they wanted to be here. Um, I didn't know we were gonna have such fast turnaround um, on our pro- proclamation. So, just wanted to say, you know, happy birthday to Troop one fifty-nine and yep, keep, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach, and yes, um, yes, it's, it's a wonderful thing and um, appreciate your comments. Alright, next, we're gonna go to the next agenda item, which in this case was gonna be the visitors other than agenda items. I'd just like to make a announcement to the, to the public that this item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a menu for debate or for the, or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time. And after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. And those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. So, I just wanted to make that clear so that in the event that there's a, a citizen who wants to uh, bring uh, to our attention, an item that's not on the agenda, uh, just keep it brief to three minutes and get to the point. And, and we will do the best we can to uh, maybe not immediately, but uh, to respond to your, to your uh, to your issues or your, your uh, concerns. So, we thank you for that. Next, on the agenda items, uh, we have a report from committees and/or officers. Is there anybody on the council that would like to share anything that, that was done this week? Councilwoman Roach?
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to follow up with you about the Hanford Communities Board um, letter, the draft letter that is going to be in response to uh, DOE's uh, definition of high-level waste. And so, uh, that, there's a request for the mayors across tri-cities to sign onto that letter. And there will be a final draft sent to me this evening, which I will forward to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Yeah, and it's very important, uh, there's some definitions of those uh, waste, waste uh, rules. And uh, yes, it's very important that we make sure that we um, clean up our site to the best, to the best we can. So, yeah, I appreciate that. Anybody else? Councilmember Maloney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I'm sorry, I had a clarification about the visitor comments, I'm, I'm just making sure I understand. Um, was, was there gonna be any comments provided um, via phone call? Or is, is, or just moving on from that section because no one had signed up for any additional comments at this point? I just wanted to make sure I understood, um.
Well, I, I guess there is three more people in the audience, uh, and if they had an oppor- if they had a reason or something they wanted to bring to, to uh, the council, they could've done that. Uh, but there's nobody else online that um, they called in advance to, to get set up to, to speak tonight. And actually, there was one person, but that gentleman uh, shared his opinion and uh, and he, he chose to, to exit so that we can maintain compliance.
Great, thank you, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I fully understood, this is, you know, it's really, I, I know we all, we all believe strongly how important it is that, that the public comment is heard, and so I just wanted to make sure I understood the process and exactly what's going on. So, my apologies for interrupting, but I just wanted to make sure I understood, thank you.
And trust me, I want to tell you, we, we uh, we do miss the interaction, uh, we just, we're just in a position where we need to maintain compliance through uh, through this difficult time, and we're all hoping that we can all get through this and, and get it over with, so we can get back to normal. And people showing up and expressing their opinions in our, in our regular public meetings. Anybody else? Alright, if not, then we'll move along to um, Item seven B, General Fund Monthly Report, is Richa, are you on the line tonight, Director Richa?
Uh, yes, I am, can you hear me, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, we can hear you, good evening.
Evening, Mayor and Council, um, this is our first uh, January month report for uh, two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two biennium. Uh, and as usual, uh, for this early in the year, there is really no variance that we're expecting and nothing um, really um, out of ordinary to report at this time, uh, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Richa. And I don't see anybody with any questions on the report, so we appreciate um, your work with that. And we'll move on to the next item. So, we have hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto and unlisted. And then we have ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. And tonight, we have an ordinance amending PMC related to business licensing and regulations, Director Richa. Are you still there, Director Richa?
I am, uh, I, my apologies, my audio connection just lost, uh, got lost. Um, evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers again, uh, this is an agenda item uh, that uh, I'm going to have to um, exercise your memories from uh, way back in two thousand nineteen. Uh, twenty was a long year, so nineteen, going back to nineteen is going to feel even a long time ago. Uh, essentially, uh, council approved uh, uh, significant changes in our business licensing program, migrating from our in-house business licensing program uh, to partnering with the state on the BLS. And that was a huge uh, uh, progress for us, um, but more importantly for our uh, business owners. And the reason for that is because they could, uh, they could uh, basically renew their bu- business licenses or receive their business licenses at the same time that they applied for the state's business license as well. Um, so that was a huge savings in time uh, for our business community as well as for the city as well. Uh, during that period, we um, had um, recommended to the council uh, that we kept the business licenses at five thousand dollars. And this has been a practice since it's been passed uh, back in two thousand nineteen. However, as we were looking through our ordinances, we realized um, that uh, we made an error in omitting that uh, max of five thousand from our ordinance. Um, we were looking into whether it, this would be, since it was just an error and the intention of council was to cap it at five thousand, um, if we could um, update the ordinance. But since this is a significant change to the ordinance, we are bringing it back to um, you again and hoping that um, you would review this and hopefully pass it. Um, we did attach the presentation that uh, was presented to the council back in uh, two thousand nineteen. That does include the, the language about five thousand dollars being max for business licenses. Um, so the only, in summary, the only issue uh, here is um, our omission from the ordinance on, on that cap.
Alright. Thank you for that report, Director Richa, does anybody from the council have any questions or comments? Alright, if not, then I'll respectfully ask Mayor Pro Tem Barajas to entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor, uh, I move to approve, approve, sorry, I move to adopt ordinance number four-five-one-eight, amending the Pasco Municipal Code, Section five-point-zero-five-point-one-six-zero, fees to include a five thousand cap, five thousand dollar cap to the per-employee business license fee.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Barajas, and there's been a motion to adopt ordinance number four-five-one-eight? Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Roach? And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? It passes unanimously, thank you. Next, we'll go to Item nine B, Resolution for the Bid Award for the Lewis Street Overpass. Director uh, Worley, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, sir, I am, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, thank you, and good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Steve Worley, Public Works Director. And I'm very honored this evening to be able to bring to council the long-awaited uh, bid award for the construction phase of the Lewis Street Overpass project. As council knows and as we have presented many times on many different issues related to this project, this project has, is long-awaited and has been in the process for a couple of decades. Uh, as kind of an overview, uh, this project had some federal funding on it and there are many requirements that have to be met during the design of the project, during the environmental process of the project, during the right-of-way acquisition process as well. And so, this project has met all of those requirements and the project was put out to bid. And we had six bidders and very successful bid. Um, a couple of items I wanted to mention before we get to the award. There has been a lot of coordination with the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. Uh, I have brought to council a couple of times some of the agreements that, and easement agreements that we have entered into related to that. Uh, those agreements have not been executed by VNSF yet. Uh, there are some changes that are coming, which we found out after we brought this to council previously. Uh, they have added an additional item to our project that we did not anticipate. And that is that they wanted to demolish the underpass to within six feet below existing ground. And that was new to us, so we are going to be bringing that information back to council here soon. Uh, the other item I wanted to mention is that we did receive a bid protest on this project. And through our work with legal counsel, city manager's office, and our consulting consultants, we have addressed the bid protest and found it to be uh, invalid. And so, we are ready to move this project forward to the construction phase. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council members may have.
Thank you, Director Worley. Is everybody okay with what Mr. Worley presented, uh, Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Ma- Mayor Martinez, um, uh, Mr. Worley, I, I have a couple of questions. Uh, first question is, um, will, will we be addressing any change due to the um, the additional requirements put on us by the railroad uh, via change order, um, that won't affect the bidding process here? Or is that, how, how does that play out?
Yes, we have that option, de- depending on what direction this goes, we do have the option of amending this construction contract to include the additional work that may be needed to address the railroad's comments. We did anticipate that before the final design package was done, uh, or before we uh, opened bids. So, we issued some addendums to the bid with some information related to this new requirement. And so, some of it will be addressed uh, in this existing construction contract. But there will likely be some change orders coming our way.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. My other question is related to, I, I kinda skimmed through the line item by line item, um, just to get a sense of, of how things compared out. And I, I mean, obviously, there's some wide swings in individual lines. And I know that can be, you know, due to uh, just simply different bucketing of some of the costs, obviously. And the overall cost of the, of the bid is very close to the engineer's estimate, so that's obviously a, a, a good sign. And, and none of the bids were, the bids were all, you know, reasonably close. But um, um, if, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to chat with you offline perhaps about um, just, just understanding how, how staff looks at that and interprets that um, as part of the bid um, award and um, evaluation process.
I think that would be great, I would love to get together and chat about that with you.
Great, thank you, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Council, uh, Councilmember Maloney. If there's no one else, I'd just like to make a comment, um, as I'm looking through the construction phase funding. And I see the grants that were provided for this project. Um, you know, it's a twenty-seven million dollar project and the city of Pasco contribution is right around four-point-five million. And I just wanted to thank staff and all the people involved for um, for working. And I know it took, um, even the council before us, I mean, it took a lot of visits to Olympia, a lot of work to do, to do this, and um, you know, I finally see it come to fruition. And I just want to thank everybody who had a big part in this and, and um, and all the work that was put into it, so thank you very much. So, with that, uh, council, uh, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Barajas, would you like to entertain a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor, I move to approve resolution number four-zero-three-eight, awarding the Lewis Street Overpass Project to Cascade Bridge LLC of Vancouver, Washington in the amount of twenty-two million, three-hundred-and-forty-four, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, including Washington State sales tax, and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents and allowing all necessary budget adjustments.
I'll second.
Thank you, and was that Councilmember Alvarado with a second? Uh, so, seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. So, there's been a motion to approve resolution number four-zero-three-eight, and it's been seconded? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? It passes unanimously, thank you very much, and thank you, council. Next, we're gonna go to Item C, nine C. And that is the resolution, uh, the Bid Award for Columbia East Forest Main Project. Director Worley, would you like to uh, give us an update on this one?
Yes, I would, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, another uh, very uh, large project that we are getting to the construction phase. As we have brought to council on several other occasions, you may recall that this is the second part of a two-part, two-phase project. The first part of the project was the lift station portion, and that project is completed. And now, we have the force mains that will uh, be used by the lift station to pump the wastewater from the industrial processors to the reuse facility. Um, our goal with this project is to get the force mains constructed, at least one of them. The contract has a deadline to it, by July second, so that when Grimway starts up their carrot processing this summer, they will, their flows will be redirected to the reuse facility. So, we are working hard to get that going. Another item I wanted to mention is that on many occasions, we've mentioned that we have an EDA, a federal EDA grant associated with this project. We mentioned in the agenda report that we originally were uh, awarded three million dollars. And through a lot of work on uh, public works engineering staff, they were able to get that bumped up to six million dollars. In order to award this project, we are actually required to receive the bid award letter from EDA. And we have been in coordination with EDA for many weeks and months, and we have not received it yet. We were hoping to receive it today, and we did not receive it. So, one of the items that we are going to need to address tonight is a revised resolution and a revised motion. And the reason for the revised resolution and motion is because according to EDA, in order to receive the six million in funding from them, we can't award it until we get their award letter from them, which we understand is coming, we hope to get it this week. Um, so the motion and the resolution need to be revised to make this bid award contingent on the receipt of the bid, the award, grant award letter from EDA. And so, I wanted to mention that, and uh, City Attorney Ferguson may want to add some clarification to that uh, when I'm done with my portion of the presentation. Um, so, also, I wanted to mention that you will notice on the bid tabulation, there is the low bidder indicated as being non-responsive. And this is related to the fact that they were the low bidder and as part of the bid process, we, we are requiring them to submit an original signed copy of their bid bond. Because we do electronic bidding, they submit an electronic copy of their bid bond, but within forty-eight hours after the bid opening, they are required to submit the original signed bid bond to us. Colbert chose not to do that. And so, based on that, we have considered them non-responsive. And so, we are recommending that the award go to the second low bidder. They are responsive, they did sign. They are responsive. They did submit their originally signed bid bond and they are willing to do the work. And so our recommendation is to award the bid to DW Excavating in the amount shown. So with that, one of the items in the resolution that needs to be revised is under the the last, at the end of the resolution where it says be it further revised, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force immediately upon passage by the city council. I would add and receipt of the EDA funding award letter.
Keith, can I jump in there real quick?
You bet.
All right, sorry. Yeah, I I assumed uh we we were trying to uh uh adjust this on the fly and and I changed my mind on that portion. I I that's exactly what I told Steve, but I think now we need to amend the paragraph right above it. Uh you'll notice where it ends uh uh you know, including Washington State's uh state sales tax. And that's where we would want to add the language uh contingent upon uh receipt of EDA funding award letter. Uh so we would need to amend the resolution and then we can uh go over and amend. Uh we need to uh do a motion to amend the resolution and then we can uh pass the resolution as amended. So I can walk y'all through that whenever you're ready.
Okay, so you so uh so you're requesting that we um make a motion to amend the the resolution, correct, first?
That's correct. Yeah, so the first thing we need to do is make a motion. I'll read um I'll uh I guess I could read the uh the the language that we need to add uh to the first uh I guess uh paragraph there in the in the uh be it resolved. Uh we just need to add to that right afterward. It says uh Washington State sales tax. We need to add contingent upon receipt of EDA funding letter. So we just needed a mo- we would need a motion to add that language.
Okay. Are you getting this, uh Mayor Pro Tem Barajas?
Can you repeat that uh last sentence, please?
Yes, ma'am, sorry. Yeah, so it's uh the the language that we need to add uh after Washington State sales tax is contingent upon receipt of the EDA funding award letter.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So just to be clear, are are we reading this motion once or is this motion to change the resolution?
Yeah, so this will just be a motion to amend the resolution.
Okay.
And then somebody can make a motion to uh pass the resolution as amended.
Okay, perfect. So this, so we are now in a position to uh make a a motion to amend the resolution. So are you ready, Mayor Pro Tem Barajas?
I believe so, Mayor.
Okay, let's give it a shot.
Well, let's give it a shot. Um so first one, I move to amend the resolution number four zero three nine. And then do you need the rest?
Uh I think it's pretty clear that what we're trying to amend it to, we we've said it a couple of times. I I think everybody, unless anyone has any questions, I think um we should be fine.
Okay, so there's been a motion to appro- uh to amend resolution four zero three nine. Uh do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, the motion passes to to amend the resolution. And now I would entertain the motion to pass the resolution four zero three nine as amended.
Okay, so here it goes. Um I move to approve resolution number four zero three nine, awarding and correct me if I'm wrong, are we still keeping Columbia East?
Uh yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, what what here's what, here's what I would uh add uh to that motion. If you could just uh add, I move to approve uh resolution number um I'm sorry, I don't have that number right in front of me.
Four zero three nine.
Four zero three nine. And then you uh if we could say uh as amended and then uh or yeah, and then after Washington State sales tax, if we could add that contingent language that we just added to the resolution, that would be best.
Perfect. Uh I move to approve resolution number four zero three nine as amended. And you don't need the amount, including Washington State sales tax, contingent upon receipt of EDA's award letter and further author authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents and allowing all necessary budget adjustments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So the there's
I'm sorry, Mayor. That, Mayor, I'm sorry. We we do need that language where it says awarding the Columbia East Force Main Project
Okay.
to DW Excavating.
All right, here we go again. I move to approve resolution number four zero three nine, awarding Columbia East Force Main Project to DW Excavating Incorporated of Devonport, Washington in the amount of five million, nine hundred and eighty-five and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents, including Washington State sales tax. Let me pull up my note real quick. Sales tax, um as amended, sales tax contingent upon receipt of EDA's award letter and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents and allowing all necessary budget adjustments.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. So there's been a motion to uh to approve the amended resolution four zero three nine. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Milney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh thank you. I know that was kinda tough there, Mayor Pro Tem Barajas, but uh way to get through that.
Thank you. We finally got it right.
All right, so there we go. Next, we uh we'll go to the next item and this is a resolution to uh for the acceptance of work for for fire stations number eight one, eight two and rehab and restroom facility renovations and fire station number eight three constructions at Sanford Parkway. Chief Gear, are you on the line tonight?
I am on the line. Can you copy me okay?
I I can hear you just fine. Thank you. Good evening.
All right, I I think this will be way less complicated than the last resolution. So first, we'll we'll talk about fire station eighty-one, eighty-two uh and the rehab. These were all bid as one project with one uh contractor. And uh you can see on on what's my left, uh we did some work in the uh living area of Station eighty-one uh which essentially uh involved removing uh some walls and opening up the kitchen area, making that larger in the day room area and then adding a uh room for the storage of their turnouts that had better drying effect in it. And then also um on the right-hand side of the slide, uh we fenced in the back parking lot. We've had a continued problem with uh break-ins in the firefighters' cars there at night. Um so we had had to add some security to that parking lot behind Station eighty-one. Uh so next slide. So this, the old turnout room um on your left slide again uh was pretty cramped. Uh people had stuff stacked all over. Unfortunately, there's not a slide in the new turnout room, but you can see that stuff is pretty stacked in there. It's very small for the number of people that are assigned to that station. And then on the right-hand side, we added a new turnout storage room behind that station or on the on the uh north side of that station to to accommodate the number of people that are there. Plus, we run our water rescue program out of that station and they have their wet suits and their uh all their, or excuse me, their dry suits um and all the the personal protective equipment they use in the water rescue program. So that was added on that northwest corner of the station. So next slide. Um and there, again, you can see the fence compound area that we we ended up having to do there. We've had numerous uh carpals in the station. Up on the left-hand side, uh you see the floors, uh we removed all the carpet and VCT tile um and ground the floors and sealed them. And that's that's kind of a new thing. It's, we're doing that in all the new stations. Plus, in these older stations, we're retrofitting those because it's so much easier to um keep the biologics clean on those floors when they're brown concrete instead of tile or uh carpet. And then on the right-hand side, it's just some of the new alerting equipment that was installed in the station that shows a uh monitor board that dispatches where they're going, drops a pin on the location they're going to. And in instances where Google Map has a picture of the building they're going to, it will actually show the building that they're responding to. Next slide. Station eighty-two, we didn't do any major work at eighty-two other than um taking, again, taking out the tile and the carpet, uh grinding the floors. We did paint that station inside. It was due for a painting. And then we did add a um a boot cleaning station in in their uh our location for them to clean their boots off when they come in off a call or their shoes when they come in off a call before they go into the living area. Uh so it was a pretty minor remodel. You probably saw that from the uh or up date from the the costing. So next slide. And there's the old Station eighty-two carpets and stuff on the left-hand side. Um the right-hand side just shows what the the bays normally look I like, excuse me, and then the vending machines out there. Those, in case you guys haven't seen those, those vending machines are what we disperse our controlled medications out of. And that's how we keep track of who checks out what controls medic- medications that come out of those vending machines. So next slide. And then, once we updated, again, the uh carpet and tiles all removed, um there are kind of that, I guess it'd be a middle slide where you see the printer stand and the reader board uh again, or the monitor board. That's where they could look at the the call information, have a map pin drop of where they're going to. The whole idea with that is part of our whole new alerting in the stations is to is to not to have to stop and look at maps on the wallpaper, maps on the wall, figure out where they're going and help the guys because, you know, we get, we have a lot of streets in this city. We don't have a really good street naming um scheme. So trying to remember where every little street is and every little cul-de-sac and um everything that somebody builds and puts in and and two months later, it's it's got a name and houses are being built on it already. So getting some new alerting to these stations was really important to try and speed up what we call our turnout time, the amount of time it takes from when uh uh an incident is dispatched till their uh wheels rolling on the rig. Um so there's there's new speakers, there's the monitor boards. Um and the bottom right corner is the the red light that comes on inside their bedroom now to wake them up. They don't wake up to a bright light. They wake up to a red light and a voice announcing the dispatchs without any harsh tones or noise. Um and that's all part of what we call a heart healthy program to try and um reduce the stress of of to try and wake them up quickly, but not in a really stressful manner that increases their heart rate. So next slide. And okay, down at the training center, we added um a restroom at the training center and a roof over what we call our rehabilitation center where people can get out of either rain and snow as they're down there training or out of the heat and have a shaded area. And then we have a a shower trailer, a decontamination shower trailer that we park in there. And and we built that so that that trailer is plugged in and heated and drains, has water and drains so that if something bad happens during training, we can put people in that decontamination shower trailer and get them cleaned off quickly. Um so with the next slide, you'll see some pictures of that. So here's the original building. This is on the uh north side of what's currently the fire admin. It's about a little over a one acre piece of ground that we leased from the Port of Pasco for a thousand dollars a month. And this is really the the center of our uh hands-on training facility. And that is the shower trailer parked outside there um that you can see in the left slide. And the original building on the right side. So that. So we added this covered area. Um you can see in that top left slide and the middle slide, the bathroom. And then the right side shows the the restroom. This restroom, the importance of this is, is when they're out there training and especially when they're doing live burns, it they're contaminated and they can't, the firefighters cannot come into the regular building in all their protective clothing and even their uniforms underneath because they're all very contaminated carcinogens. So we had to get a facility where they can use the restroom when they're out there training for a day without having to take their turnouts off, take their uniforms off, shower and then use the the bathroom in the regular building without contaminating that regular portion of the building. So this is a, this is essentially, I don't know if it's the right term, but we'll call it a dirty bathroom um where they can use that restroom without having to take off all of their contaminated clothing or personal protective equipment while they're out there training dur- during the day. And then we'll back the shower trailer in there. This is an early slide. We'll back the shower trailer in there um so that if something really bad happens, we can decontaminate those people quickly in the shower trailer and then uh send them off for medical care. So next slide. I think that's probably the end. Oh, I'm sorry. And here's costs, uh original engineers estimate on these three projects. And they were all bid. These three projects were bid as one project, so it got a little confusing. To be honest, we probably should not do that in the future. Um lesson learned. Um at one point, one five million. Uh by the time we were done, the total construction cost to the contractors was nine hundred and seventeen thousand. There always is some soft costs associated with that. There's permit costs and and contract management costs. So the total cost is a little bit higher than that. But in remodels, we had about five and a half percent in change orders uh which remodels are always tough. Um you can see some of the things we had to do to to get the remodels uh in line with what we thought we were gonna get when we did them. Um overall, I think we came in real well. So those are the kind of the details of the eighty-one, eighty-two and the rehab restroom. Um so with that, is there any questions on that portion of this uh item?
See, any questions? That was a very thorough report, Chief Gear. So if there's no um no questions or comments, Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to uh entertain the motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. Chief Gear, thank you for that presentation. Uh motion, the first motion, I move to approve resolution number four zero four zero, accepting the work performed by Jackson Contractor Group Incorporated for renovations of fire station numbers eighty-one and eighty-two and fire rehab and restroom facility renovations.
Thank you. So there's a motion to approve, uh let's get that resolution number again. Uh resolution number forty forty. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. Uh so all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Approve uh, it passes unanimously.
Motion number two, I move to approve resolution number four zero four one, accepting the work performed by Sherbinow Construction Company for the construction of fire station number eighty-three located at Sanford Parkway.
All right, there's been a motion to approve resolution four zero four one. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilmember Maloney. I I would like to hear the chief's presentation before we approve this, so I'd I'd ask that we hold on for just a little bit before he finishes through that portion of the presentation.
All right, Chief Gear.
My apologies, chief.
Well, that's okay. I was hoping we were gonna slide right on through. Okay, so here's fire station eighty-three. And I know very few had a chance to see Station eighty-three and what we're gonna try and do is arrange some um tours um on the weekends when you guys are more available. And I'll meet you up there and we'll we'll uh get everybody to walk through the new station. So this is just a floor plan of the station. It's a four-bay station, um six living areas, about ten thousand five hundred square foot station. Um everybody's really happy that that are living in there right now. Other than they're struggling to keep the the uh concrete floors clean, but we're working on trying to get them a Zamboni or something in there to to keep those floors clean. Uh but again, we really like the design and we're hoping to replicate this design of Station eighty-three uh for Station five over on Road one hundred when we when we get there. Um so next slide.
Chief Gear, uh this is Councilmember Alvarado, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Uh yes, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado.
I just had a question. I really appreciated talking to you the other day about um the fire organization and how far it's come uh here in Pasco. And I'm just uh curious if the architecture or the floor plan had to do uh or or was there um much uh thought there uh to the culture building aspects of uh building the uh the rapport amongst the uh amongst the the various firefighters there. Just uh curious if that. amongst the, the various firefighters there. Just, uh, curious if that kind of, uh, came out in the design as well? Out of curiosity.
We, we did a, uh, facilities working group that had representation from every shift, um, had separate union representation, had membership from the city, um, facilities department, IS department, um, I, I, and building department. And we spent months, um, in the design of that station with multiple meetings with the architect, um, and really got a huge amount of input into this, design of this station. And that's why I'm really comfortable with, uh, moving forward with using this station floor plan for our next few fire stations. Um, there was a huge amount of buy-in and, and discussion amongst all different departments of the city, not just the fire department, or not just the fire chief and the architect. Um, you know, I was a small boy. I was more of a facilitator in saying, what do we need? Uh, what do we need to build? And what, how should it be laid out? And how do we meet codes? Um, so I, I, I personally, I was very happy with the process we used, and we've had very few, uh, pushbacks on things that, that were done in this station design.
Thank you so much for answering that, indulging me. I, I, uh, buildings matter and architecture matters, so I, I really appreciate that you took an engagement approach.
We did. It, it was almost a year and a half of engagement approach on this first design.
Alright, thank you. So that-
Next slide, Zach?
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. So here, you know, here's how we started out. Um, gets laid out and, and we start going from there, so. Next slide, Zach. Thank you. Going through the construction, um, some people laugh and say there's a, some fire stations are designed with what we call a hose tower, where you hang your hose up to dry. Well, we have the biggest hose tower in the nation, probably right behind Station eighty-three, but actually it's full of water, so we can't take credit for that. But the design and, uh, you know, we made a decision early on to go with that, um, arched roof. And I think that arched roof is really reflective of the, um, airport and the aircraft and the, and the first, um, Pony or, uh, not Pony Express, but the Air Express Mail, um, coming into Pasco. It's kind of like a hangar design, and I think that's pretty cool, the way that came out. So next slide. Um, here's some pictures of the finished station up there on the left. If you've been by it, especially if you go by in the evening, it, it really looks nice. Um, especially with the backlighting, um, plenty of room inside the stations. You can see the floor gets a little dusty on that upper right-hand slide. And, uh, we're gonna figure out how to keep those a little cleaner without knocking the guys out. Um, down in the bottom left, everybody asked me a lot of questions about why there were so many boulders out front. Um, but actually, we had the initial landscaping design came in, and, and I absolutely refused that. There was over five hundred sprinklers designed in this fire station, and, and I, I wasn't going for that at all. I'm a zero-scaping guy. Um, we've got to reduce the amount of water we use, and we have to reduce the workload. We put on our facilities people to maintain these kind of facilities and get, and get to, I believe personally, um, and if I offend any council members, I'm sorry, but I think we've gotta look at using less water on these kind of sites and using less labor to maintain them. Um, and, and I'm, I'm happy to say I think this site, this fire station is, is going to be way less labor-intensive for our facilities people to maintain, especially the exterior portion of it. Um, so next slide. And again, here's the, the costs. Um, change orders came out to about two-point-two-five percent overall on this project, um, which I think is pretty good. Um, we did, you know, we did have some, a couple of the change orders were, um, owner-induced, and that would be, uh, right off the bat in the first one. I made a change order on the generator, um, which was, I think, a change order number two. That was probably one of the larger change orders, and that was because the generator proposed in the specifications was not one that's easy to get maintenance on here in the community. And I asked to change to a Caterpillar brand generator because we have those at other stations. We've had real good luck with Caterpillar's maintenance program. So that was the largest change order, and that was changed before Station eighty-four went out the bid. So we won't see that, uh, change order in Station eighty-four. Um, so other than that, that's the, the cost to date. Um, it was an excellent bidding climate this year. We did really well. Um, our original estimates on Station eighty-three, um, by the time you have the construction estimate at five million, and then all the other costs associated with it, we expected it to be around seven million. It's gonna really come in about five and a half to six million total with, um, all the permitting costs and others, what we call soft costs, construction management, things that come around that. Um, so I'm, I'm very happy with how that work came out on Station eighty-three and how that project cost came out. So with that, any questions?
Thank you, Chief Gear. Uh, Councilmember Serrano.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. I appreciate that presentation. You mentioned that, uh, the hope is we can replicate this for Station, uh, eighty-five or Station five off-road one hundred. Do you foresee that in, uh, decreasing those soft costs or the engineering pretty significantly? Um, I mean, hopefully we can render savings by replicating. Any thoughts on that, or is that more of Mr. Whirly, or just wait and see?
We, we just got a, uh, statement of work from an architect, uh, from our architect. Uh, we went out again, solicited architects, and, and, uh, we had four people propose, uh, for Station eighty-five design. Um, again, the same company that designed this one came out, uh, far ahead of the other three proposers. Uh, because they are really a, uh, architect firm that, that specializes in fire stations throughout the West Coast. Uh, their statement of work on that station was just around five hundred thousand, and that's about three to four hundred thousand under what we paid on Station, um, eighty-three to do the original design. So I think, yeah, we're gonna see three to four hundred thousand dollars in savings using that same design in architectural and engineering services.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys' forward-thinking, and, and I gotta say, that is a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. Um, sadly, I guess, maybe they're already very busy. It's a good thing and a bad thing at the same time. Um, but yeah, I, I can say I've, I've heard many, many sirens, so I appreciate that you're that close. Um, hopefully we can avoid too many catastrophes. And, uh, last shout-out is, my kids have been there a couple times, and they loved it. They love climbing on those rocks, so next time, get some that are less sharp, please. Thanks, Chief.
Anyone else? Well, I just, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this, it's a comment, not a question, uh, Chief, but I just, it was, it was mark, it was, it was, I think, very remarkable to look at. Um, you say favorable bidding climate. I know that's part of it, but it's also prudent management by staff. Um, we're seeing that across, yeah, of course, the entire city. We, we're seeing a lot of, uh, bids be well-controlled. Um, we're not seeing a lot of change orders. We're seeing a lot of bids come in lower than expected. Um, I mean, just doing a quick, quick add-up of, um, either awards we're approving tonight or, um, or work that we've completed. Um, I think the, um, the, the force payment was about four million dollars under the, um, the estimate. We're talking here about, you know, again, um, you know, millions of dollars saved, or, you know, over a million dollars saved, I think cumulatively across these, uh, these two projects here. So, you know, it's just, it's just really, um, really wonderful to see that the city staff, how well the city staff is managing our taxpayers' dollars to make sure we can get the facilities we need. They're still beautiful facilities, very functional for, for our staff members, but they're also not, not, not breaking the bank for it either. So, you know, I'm really excited to see these in, in front of us here. Uh, kudos very much to staff for, for all their hard work in, in all the areas.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. If there's no one else-
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Chief Gear, uh, and, and share with the public. Any, you know, he mentioned tours, and anytime there's an opportunity to go and visit the, the facility for yourself, uh, I know several of us went to go, um, when we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and it's just amazing the detail and how we take care of our firefighters so that they can do their job. You know, the detail that is involved there is just amazing, and many, many people will ask, why did it cost so much? Even though we think we saved money, it still is very expensive. But when you, when you go see for yourself the details and what they're doing to ensure the safety of our community, it, it'll help you understand a little bit more. Not to mention that there's a lot of, uh, regulations that we have to abide by that sometimes may, uh, increase the cost. But, uh, but we are confident that we've done it the most efficiently and, uh, frugal way possible. Uh, so we're, we're very proud of it, and, um, you know, that's, that's what we got. That's what we're offering to the public, and it's yours. Uh, 'cause you paid for it, and with the help of our staff and council, uh, we were able to get this done, and I just appreciate all the help, um, in, in, in getting this completed. So thank you very much. And Chief Gear, I, I would, I think I, it would be safe for me to speak for our former council member, Al Yenney, on the zero-scaping and reducing our costs there with the landscaping. Uh, thank you very much for that, and for the forward-thinking, as had been mentioned before, and how we can, uh, save in, in the future. So thank you very much for that. So with that, Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to entertain the motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. And before I do that, uh, again, I just want to apologize for skipping ahead. Uh, Chief Gear, I wanted to get right to it. Uh, and obviously, due to health reasons, I was not there for the ribbon-cutting, but I do look forward to planning a tour soon. And with that, uh, motion, I move to approve Resolution number four zero four one, accepting the work performed by Sherbinow Construction Company for the construction of Fire Station number eighty-three located at Sanford Parkway.
Alright, so there's a motion to approve Resolution four zero four one. Do I hear a second?
I'll second this.
Seconded by Councilmember Maloney. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. And thank you once again, Chief Gear. Alright, so next, we'll go to the next item. We have unfinished business. There's none listed. And, uh, we have new business, none listed. And we'll move right along to miscellaneous discussion. Is there anybody that would like to share anything on miscellaneous discussion? Uh, Chief Gear, are you still on the line tonight?
Yes, sir.
Any quick, uh, any quick, uh, updates on the vaccination sites that do we'd like to share? Just any quick comment?
Um, no, it's going well. Uh, like forty-nine hundred vaccines next week. Um, you know, last week was a big week because we were doing two weeks' worth of stuff. Uh, we are, we have been asked to assist Walla Walla County with their mass vaccination sites, so I'm gonna be going there on Thursday, um, to see what kind of help they need. Uh, that was a state Department of Health request to the incident management team. So we'll go over there Thursday and, and see what kind of things, um, primarily what they're asking for is some planning and documentation assistance at Walla Walla County Health Department. Uh, but we'll see exactly what kind of help they need. We're expecting, if, if you're remembering the roadmap, excuse me, the roadmap to recovery, um, each region only gets one incident management team assigned to the region to assist them. So all the counties in that region have to share the support of that incident management team. So that's why we've been asked to, uh, assist Walla Walla County and, and are expecting a request from, uh, Kidittas County. Uh, so that's about it. Otherwise, it's, it's going really well, and everybody's really happy to see the nice weather this week compared to last week where we're trying to do double vaccines on top of forty, fifty mile an hour winds. Test site, um, you know, numbers are varying between two hundred to about four fifty a day. Um, we're actually pushing the test site out to do a little off-site testing. They did one in Penis Park last week. They're going in to do another, uh, pop-up testing at Fiesta Foods. And, um, the positivity rate for the last week was at thirteen percent, which is the lowest it's been since we started that site, so that's good news. So I think with that, that's probably the end of report unless there's any questions.
Yep. Well, thank you very much for that, Chief Gear. It was very helpful. And, uh, you know, I personally, when the weather came in and delayed the vaccines, and then we had all those to do last week, um, I was, I was really thinking about you guys out there and wondering if it was gonna be done, and you guys stepped up to the plate and did it. So, uh, thank you very much for that, and it's my understanding that your site, um, over there at the Benton County Fairgrounds is, uh, one of the best-performing sites in the state of the five. I think it's five that's set up throughout the state of Washington. So thank you very much for all the efforts, and please relay that to all the wonderful people working in the vaccination site over there. Alright, next, we'll move on to the next item, and city manager, do we have an executive session for tonight?
No need this evening, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, it is eight twenty-four, and we have nothing further. Again, thank you very much for joining us tonight, and, um, have a great week. This meeting is now adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.